One point five total. Okay, but why am I thinking, help me out guys? Am I missing the boat? Aren't we, we were getting six point five for ECS and now our projections are down. Well, we said five million, but we-
Which is optimistic.
Right, so I'm just trying to get a little context here for folks that are here, so they understand what we're working with. What, what are we thinking that our best guess for revenue is?
So-
Are you talking about ECS?
Yes.
Yeah, there's multiple.
Was that six point nine and we're looking at five point one?
It was six point nine and we're looking right now at five point one, but it, it could be further reduced. It probably will. Am I right?
No, no. Hold on.
Five point one.
Yeah, no, it's five point eight. Six point five down to five point eight, which is a reduction of seven hundred and twenty thousand in ECS.
Twenty thousand, so it's-
It's in, uh, on your tab, under the red tab in this book, grants and other revenue?
Oh, yes. I know it was here somewhere. I missed all the data. Where is that again? ECS?
Yep.
Page one of the red tab.
Yeah, I got it. Seven hundred and twenty thousand, that's-
Yes.
That's the change between what we initially thought we were going to get in seventeen eighteen and then you can see obviously the whole house and then the proposed for this year is like eight. I mean, that's the most.
Mm-hmm. All right, so it's really one point two million plus seven hundred thousand. Seven twenty.
So you're saying one-
So that's what the whole would be, one point nine. I'm looking at the whole town issue now.
You're fact, okay, you're factoring in the whole, everything, okay.
Right, 'cause we're all one big happy family here.
That's got, that's got the Salem tuition in there, in that tab as well.
Yeah, yeah, you're, I don't know if you're factoring in the Salem tuition as well.
Oh, that's, thanks for that.
Yeah.
That's another two hundred thousand. No, thank, thank you, Tim, for being forthright about that. That's another two hundred thousand, right? So it's, okay, so that's really two point two million is the whole.
Yeah, one eighty-one.
Well, so I'm saying-
She's counting town, but we're counting town revenue as well, right?
I'm, right, 'cause we're all one big-
You're putting the whole pot together, yeah.
I'm put, 'cause, 'cause the whole pot affects the whole town.
Sure, sure. Yep.
Okay.
And your grant list is, what, up three million?
Uh, I don't have that number in front of me.
Last, we, last Wednesday night, that number was reported, it's up three million.
All right, so, but the difference in revenue and cost between this budget and the reduction in ECS funding and Salem tuition is two point, about two point two million. Which is a chunk in mil rate. A big chunk in mil rate. Okay, for now, I'm good.
It's kind of gone off the presentation, but is there any more questions about the presentation? I don't think so. I think we beat that one up. Okay. So when we get into the actual budget, has anybody got a list that they want to start working through, um, issues or questions from the budget book? Anybody want to start? John, was there any clearing your throat because you didn't want to start?
No.
Okay.
Bill, if I could, maybe we should begin where we just were leaving off because that, our conversation about the ECS funds is pretty critical to the budget for you all and for the town as well, so, you know, I, I guess, in addition to reading all of this that has been given to us, we're all well aware of the possibility that more and more cuts are on their way, possible. So, is there anything that you all have looked at from a grant perspective creatively, however, to, to help with that, with this shortfall? I mean, before you even get into your budget cutting, to make up for the seven hundred and twenty thousand shortfall? Are there federal grants, forget the state? I mean, at this point, you know, are there federal grants that can fill the hole, that can be directed in a way that the ECS grants can be?
We, we haven't, we haven't extensively looked out for, or looked for, you know, federal grants or additional, you know, state grant that might be available. The problem that we run into with, you know, if you obtain a grant of that nature, you can, you get the money, you put things in place, but then if the grant runs dry, we're stuck with what's left, sort of thing. But not to say that we shouldn't be, you know, continue to look for opportunities in, in dollars. I know what I presented, a lot of, you know, smaller dollar items, more shared services with, you know, more regional approach with things. Right now, that's, that's been mostly our focus.
Okay. Do you have staff dedicated within the administration just for grant writing? Educate me on that.
No, we'd like to add an administrator in for that, if we could.
So you should, so-
So we make that sixteen, seventeen, Camille, I'd appreciate that.
So you all, right.
We, no, we, we don't have anybody that's-
So there's not anyone-
No, our assistant, no, our assistant superintendent, who's multifaceted and multi-talented and our director of special services, and sometimes our administrators have done a great job trying to find some of those in smaller grants, but that's about it.
So it's a joint effort by those existing staff members that you have?
Yeah, we all, all hands on deck, sort of thing. But we don't have a, a specific grant writer that could go out and research those things for us.
But our focus, we've been trying, as a board, we've been trying to focus on both sides of the balance sheet, right? I mean, is there other ways we can bring revenue in because we know that money's tight and just cutting everything isn't going to work, but it's, it's, it's a balance. So, with that said, increasing revenues obviously is something that we would like to do in, in any area that we could, whether it's from private grants or public grants or whatever. All right, John, back to your questions.
I'm looking at the line item under one eighteen, object codes of the certified salary.
Page one, on the first tab.
Third take. And it jumped eighty-seven percent. Why is that?
Those are, those are those individuals that we talked, that I talked about before, the three independent contractors that we made employees. So, in our adopted budget last year, they were not there.
They were elsewhere in the budget. They've been moved.
They were in contracted services versus-
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they've gone from contracted services over to this line.
Another thing, I'm looking at the page, page one was under the, the orange tab, yellow orange for second time, voting by location. I'm looking at all the different schools, and two that were higher than the rest with Flanders and Nyonic Center. One was four point one four, there was five point three eight. Why is that compared to the other ones, which were one percent or less?
I can speak to one of them, Flanders School. You see an increase there because, as I mentioned, we were decreasing one elementary teacher. That elementary teacher is being decreased at the Lilly Be Haynes School, but over at Flanders, we have a need where we have, we had a one-year position which is gone, now we're adding that, adding that in. So, no additional cost, but we're just moving the money from Haynes over. That's why, under Lilly Be Haynes, you see a minus one twelve.
Right.
So that's part.
And Nyonic Center, the same thing?
Why is it?
It's staffing adjustments.
And the psych, the, we're adding the, part of the psychologist there as well, the way we're breaking up the half, the psychologist.
Okay, so-
But that's some of it.
So part of that is the, that halftime psychologist that we, we had referenced. The social worker being-
No, that's contracted right there. I'm just looking to see what jumps out at me, and I think it's not me. I think it's just that real line, so I'm just staffing to make sure that it's in the right school.
Yeah, what, what you're going to see, and we mentioned this last year, we are still in the process of reallocating and putting things in the right line items, so moving forward, we'll be able to compare, you know, year to year, actuals. We haven't been able to do that previously, so you're going to see, still, there's still some movement that, that is occurring, so part of it could be, could be that.
Okay, on the next page, object code one twenty-six, instructional assistant went up sixty percent.
For district-wide elementary?
Yes.
That is-
It was almost forty-one thousand dollars.
Yep.
Moving, moving with, uh-
There were, some of, some of the IAs last year were being funded in the preschool through grants. We've shifted where the IAs, the grant funds are no longer in the preschool, they're within, mainly Lilly Be and Nyonic Center is where we're using some of the grant funding. Does that, so, but we have, and Bill's, they're in the tab under grant revenue, we have some federal funds that we get every, sorry.
We have, we have federal funds that we get to offset salaries for IAs, TAs, and some certified teachers. So, last year, in the current year budget that we're in, there were more grant funds used, going to offset the district-wide elementary, which is our preschool, and those grant funds are now being used toward Lilly Be and Nyonic Center IAs and TAs versus the preschool. So it's just, I, I, I mean, the, the IAs and TAs are the same, it's just where, where the funding is coming from. Instead of coming from the operating budget for Lilly Be and Nyonic, we're using grant funding for Lilly Be and Nyonic, and we're putting those IAs and TAs in the preschool.
So I think this year, there are quite a few less reclassifications than there had been in previous years, but when we try to follow, because I mean, you have these notes at the end of each category on page one of the funding, it says due to reclassification, but then I look at the two buckets and it's like, okay, you took from one eighteen and put to three twenty-three, but they both grew. So it's like, okay, so, sometimes it's hard to see the logic.
So three twenty-three, you're going to see the increase there because the social workers that we spoke about, we're currently in a two-year contract with Child and Family Services. So, we're going to get two point seven FTE worth, but right now, we are looking to utilize Child and Family Services for that, so we have that in contracted services. So I know, so we should, so we're moving some people out of contracted services to make them employees, however, the two point seven now in the social workers is going to be contracted services until our contract is up with Child and Family Services. So that's why you don't see this decrease in contracted services because we've got the social workers in there now.
My point wasn't that specific example.
Oh, okay.
My point was when we sit down with these books and we try to go through them, and we try to see the story you're trying to tell us, sometimes there's just, there's no narrative that we, well, there's a little bit of a narrative, but it's not really enough for, for us to sit down at home and go through this, and sometimes we kind of run into walls, and I think this is just one of those.
Sure, I'd be happy to add more narrative for next year.
Okay. I'm sorry, John, back to you. And back to you.
Just, I think, right now, two more questions. On page fifteen, item code one nineteen, non-certified computer consultant, went up almost eighty-nine percent, eighty-five thousand dollars.
That's, I'm seeing that, I mean, one nineteen, well, the, the contract between, and the additional-
So this is another one of those, those situations with the contracted services. We have utilized an outside computer networking support, you know, contract, through a contract service, an outside vendor. We are trying to focus on, for next year, developing our own in-house technology support service and not relying on a contractor. So that's why the dollars have been funneled over to this area and should be removed in the other area, right?
Yeah, it's not-
You put that out to bid?
What's that?
You put, you put that out to bid on this outside contractor? I mean, do you look at other contractors?
Put the computer, if you can?
Yes.
No, we were looking to move away from the contractors altogether.
I know, but, but ones that you have now are outside, correct?
Yes, yes.
Now, do you look at other contractors outside? I know going forward, you're trying to get away from that, but-
Yeah.
Up to this point.
We would have, yeah, we would have, that was something that we wanted to investigate further, you know, other outside vendors, but we're trying to move away from the outside, outside vendors.
Okay.
Is the goal.
Yeah. And the other thing was, just to jump over a couple items, you're talking about psychologists and social workers. Maybe I missed it in your previous presentation, but it, did you get any federal money for those people?
No.
No prospect to get federal funds for psychology, no?
Not as of right now.
Not at this point?
Not, but I'm aware of it.
You know, with, with all that's happened, John, in the world that federal funds might come forth, I thought I read something somewhere recently, that they might be trying to provide additional funding or support, you know, with crisis intervention and supporting the mental health students, but nothing-
Everything that's going on, it should be-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, case in point, you know, our request for the additional social workers to help with those, those students that, you know, might be dealing with mental health.
Okay, all right. Thanks. I'll pass right now.
Is he ready to go?
Yeah, so, just help me a little bit, guys, on the, first of all, a little housekeeping issue. There's a whole bunch of page ones in this book.
I did it by tab.
Right, but it's helpful as a user, if you might want to think going forward, even if you did two dash one, three dash one, because when I'm looking at it, I'm saying, what page one was it? And I have to write down what tab it's under.
Okay.
You follow what I'm saying?
I do.
Sure you do. Okey-dokey. So, on this page that's unnumbered, that was fun.
Which tab?
Under new initiatives.
Okay.
So, it's the first page under the orange tab.
It's the only page.
Correct. Is it the only page? Yeah, I guess it is.
I have a blank page.
Okay, so the psychologist salary line item is forty-six nine, and then the social workers are one sixty-one, real, essentially one sixty-two, which leads me to believe that the social workers make twice the amount of a psychologist. Is that true?
Well, that's two point seven, social workers. That's two point seven FTEs in social worker time.
Two point seven, and, and the psychologist is zero point five.
Just point five.
Point five, that's a halftime psychologist.
Oh, yeah, my mistake. All right. So what's up with the preventive maintenance line item? Where would that be?
It's background.
Oh, yeah, page two, under the first tab. Line four thirty-one, up thirty-eight percent. What do you got on that?
Okay, it's up, you know, it's up twelve thousand nine fifty.
It's up thirty-eight percent.
Yeah. It sounds like a lot.
Yeah, the percentage sounds like a lot, but you're dealing with, because you're dealing with a smaller number.
Well, that's okay. I want to understand what's going on, though. I mean, it's, what's confusing to me is that we're getting ready to get rid of three schools, what are we PMing? I mean, you know-
It's got to be something probably at the, you know, middle school or high school level, or anything over the thirty-three thousand per current year up to forty-six.
Right, but we PM everything. I just wanted to, it seems like a bit of an anomaly.
It's up twelve thousand nine fifty.
I mean, every penny counts, you know?
Yep.
We're on the ropes here.
So, just, that's, that's our district-wide maintenance, so that's, that's up twelve thousand nine fifty. I'll have to look and see what specifically it is, if you have another question, I can double check. So that wouldn't be specific to our, our elementary schools.
Yep.
That's, anything that might come up district-wide that we would have. It includes our alarms.
It just seems like a jump to me, and I wondered if we could kick the tires on it. That's all I need to say on that. On the same page, line item five-ten, pupil transport, public schools is up seven point three percent. I know it's only a hundred and twelve thousand, but-
Yep, but so that, so that's partly because of transportation for, it's not only our transportation contract that's in there which increased a bit, but it's field trips that fall outside the scope of our transportation contract, and then special ed field trips. So, sometimes those students, if there are field trips, they need special transportation, and then it's transportation for externally placed students. So, students that are placed in outside facilities, that transportation runs us quite a bit. That's one of the items that Jeff was talking about, possibly seeing if we could work with another school district that's transporting a student to that same out-placed agency, and we can share the services. But that's about two hundred thousand for that student, for, for those types of students. So that's what we're estimating the transportation to be on.
Do, do we ask families to pay transportation for field trips?
For field trips?
For, for regular education field trips, yes, but not for special ed field trips.
Some of those are especially mandated by their, their individualized education plan. Oftentimes, maybe, you know, a group of students might be going to the, I'll use the example of the grocery store to practice their, you know, purchasing of, you know, of items there, or something of that nature. But they have to be transported there.
But do you know if the number of trips went up, or if the cost per trip went up?
No, I, I think the increase in that number is, and as I mentioned before, you know, one student can cost you, you know, fifty thousand dollars. That fluctuates with students coming and going. Sometimes they come back from out-of-district placements, sometimes they go out to out-of-district placements. I think you see an increase there because the student needing some outside support.
So likely it's the number of trips, not the cost per trip.
Yes.
It's okay. So, let's talk about sport equipment. So, one of these items, this is just an accounting issue, but, um, there's a note somewhere here, oh, bottom of page three on the first tab. The note on the bottom of the page says, decrease in high school line, which I don't know what that means. I don't see a high school line broken out here, but, maybe you could explain that, but let me finish my question. Decrease in the high school line due to the reclassification of object seven thirty-one of approximately fifty-four thousand dollars in athletic equipment that was previously budgeted in supplies. So first of all, I, that wording feels a little obtuse to me, if you don't mind my loving feedback for my educators, but I don't really know what it means, other than it means we took fifty-four thousand dollars that was budgeted in supplies, and it's now in line item seven thirty-one labeled equipment instructional. I don't really consider football pads equipment instructional, but I know you have a line of thinking here that I'm not understanding. Can you help me out?
Correct me if I'm wrong, it was, it was budgeted in the wrong location.
Oh, all right. Well, that makes perfect sense now.
And moved to the right location. That's why.
Okay, so it, you don't, you, you want to break that out, right? You're going to call it sports equipment, so that we all know what we're spending on sports equipment, and not put it in line item seven thirty-one, right? Take your time to read that, because it is a little confusing for me. The note's on the bottom of page three.
It's in instructional equipment, I mean, we could put it in non-instructional equipment.
Yeah, just as long as it's in the right, yeah, we just want to make sure it's in the right place. That's what we're trying to make sure everyone is budgeting right.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not equipment instructional.
We can move it to non-instructional.
Sorry?
We can move it to non-instructional, non-instructional.
And how much are we spending on sporting equipment?
It's about fifty-four thousand.
So that's the total?
That was being helped, correct.
So, how, what, what do we think of that? Do we look at what other schools are spending? Are we under, is a way we can, to manage that better? How often do we buy new jerseys? I know I'm going to make a lot of enemies with this conversation. I'm sorry, but-
Our principals and the professors-
Oh, hi, Mike.
Come on up for a second.
Come on up, Mike. Help me out here. Be a star and show me how you're going to save money with sporting equipment, because psycho, psychologists are way more important. Talk to me.
First of all, just to talk about why we're switching different accounts, majority of that money, I don't know what you're looking at, but I know in our conversation before, talking about adjusting where things are, we had, going through the restructuring of objects, we had all of our uniform replacement cycle got switched over into six eleven, which is instructional supplies. This is previously.
Okay.
If they're in six eleven, the problem with that is, if we take a ten percent reduction in instructional supplies, we'll say across the board, we can't really reduce ten percent of our uniforms, per se, because we're on a five to seven-year cycle, and we cycle through men's and women's sports. So, once we start cutting in different years, that's going to throw off our entire cycle. And we have to be careful not to cut men's, women's sports and not cut a men's sport.
Good call, Mike.
So, listen, I know, I know how tough you guys can be. So, what we did is, we pulled that out of the six eleven, because it's really not an instructional supply-
Right.
-per se, we moved it over. And uniforms are expensive. I mean, there's, there's, we're looking at-
So we pay for them? The families don't pay for them? We pay for them, right?
Correct. If we apply, provide the sport, we'll provide the, the uniforms for the teams. Now, we have them on a cycle, a, we're taking cycle over so many years to make sure that we, we don't miss a sport, or, you know, football's not getting uniforms every three years, and girls' basketball isn't getting it for every ten years. We just, we mapped it out, so it's, there's equity across the board. The other thing, too, is we've increased our participation rate across the board. So we have about, out of eleven hundred students, we have about eight hundred and twenty-six students that participate in sports or clubs.
Great.
So, and we've talked about this every year, about sports, how important it is to be engaged. The more you're engaged, the higher your attendance, the higher your academics-
On board with all of it. I sign up for the whole package.
Excellent.
What I don't sign up for, though, is, or let me put it this way, have we looked at the frequency? Do, do we think it's worthwhile to look at the frequency that we are replacing uniforms across the board to see if we can save some money? I mean, we just talked about the decrease in revenue here. I mean, we, we love the kids. There's, that isn't, that doesn't even need to be said.
Right.
Right? The question is, where are we going to look at trying to reduce the taxpayer burden? And I, sports to me are not, they're not, they might be right outside the core, but they're not the core of education. I know they're knocking on the door at Core. I get it, they're important.
They're a support player.
Right.
Yes, but they're a critical component to it.
I, I get it.
At the high school level.
But are we, are we looking at that? Have we zoomed out and said, gee, have we done any chin rubbing and said, maybe we can go to four years on this cycle?
Well, I can tell you that-
Because as that cascades out, that will certainly save us some money.
I can tell you that our athletic director does work with different companies to look at the best deals for equipment. I know that we don't just stick with one company and we're signed on for years. I know that he has negotiated with different vendors to get the best price possible. The other thing, too, that we've done over the years-
But that didn't answer my question.
The other thing we've done over the years is we've tried to move with our printing shop, we've tried to move things that we used to send out to get printed, to do it internally. So it does two things, the one, that tries to generate a liter of revenue in the school, but also teaches our kids how to run a small business, and it cuts down on our expenses for athletics.
I love all of that, but it still didn't answer my question. My question was, have we looked at the frequency of replacing new uniforms? I mean, I got a daughter teaching in Tulsa Public School System. They don't even have a, a sports program, and what they have, the teachers are coughing up money to make t-shirts. So, you know, well, I realize that we're fortunate and we're at the other end of the spectrum, but, you know, we got to start, we got to start looking at stuff.
Well, Mike, you mentioned six to seven years, right, is the replacement?
I think that's the cycle, yeah.
I mean, for some of those sports, I'd be concerned that that's stretching it, to be honest, but-
Okay, but have we looked at all at the whole athletic program as a whole to say, gee, given the times we're in, maybe we should look at, because one little change, as you know, on the economies of scale, is going to yield some results. And, I mean, it's easy to say, this is how we do it, I get it, but, I mean, are we taking the blinders off and me, I don't mean that in a pejorative sense, but looking at things outside the box and seeing where we can save money.
Yeah, I think that ties into those zero-based budgets, you try to look at everything from the ground up. Have we directly looked at, you know, uniforms in the cycle? No, no, to my knowledge, I know the athletic director does.
Yeah, and I can give you some other examples, too, that we look at. Transportation's another one that we look at for sports. We try and double up teams, so we're not sending two buses to one place. We look at economies within the athletic world, and again, transportation's a good example of that. So, I, I do think Steve Hargis, who's our athletic director, is very fiscally responsible.
All right, so what I'm hearing is, you guys see no opportunity at all to be more efficient with how we're spending money in our athletic program?
I'm okay going back and have a conversation with Steve Argus and looking at it, but the way our process goes at the high school, every department has to meet with me and justify their budget, line by line. And these are some of the conversations that I've had with, with Steve, to look at, again, the, the equity, efficiencies, rationale, why we're, we are doing certain things in our programs. Things like, whether it's the PE department and equipment, are there ways that we can look at sharing equipment with the athletics? Why are we buying this equipment? Why are we buying 50 tennis rackets a year for our PE department? That seems crazy to me. Well, then you start looking at how many kids use those tennis rackets over the, over the year, and you don't buy the most expensive tennis rackets, so they break. Okay, that makes sense. When I originally looked at that, like, are we eating these things?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that the operation is slipshod, or you're not, please, you're not, I hope you're not hearing that.
No, 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 I'm not taking that at all.
Okay, I'm not saying that.
I'm just explaining the process to you.
I'm just, right, and I'm just saying, in the times we're in, for that, because we're coming here looking for three, whatever it is, two and a half FTE increase, I'm looking at where we can save, where we can cut some expenses somewhere. And I'm asking, if you think there's an opportunity, if you collaborate with your colleagues on this and do some out-of-the-box thinking, and if you're telling me we've already done it and there's no gains, then that's what I want to hear you say.
Yeah, and that's what we've really done to get us down to the 2.59. You know, we've tried to look at every, every single area.
You guys are way more creative than you're giving yourselves credit for.
There's a lot of items, too, and, you know, we continue to look at. That's how we need to maintain fiscal responsibility.
All right, I think, um, just give me a minute here.
Let me go back to you.
No, I think I'm good for now. I know I don't want to be wasteful. Go ahead.
And I will get back to you on that preventive maintenance. I will talk with our facilities person.
Great, thank you.
So I can give you a breakdown.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Mariana and Jeff. Page three of the yellow tab, your advertising budget. Could you explain where you're advertising and for what, exactly?
4,500.
Job postings. It's under communication services in that grouping?
Yeah. Yeah, just the exact rationale why it went up. It's job postings, things of that nature. Went from 4,500 up to the 7,500, $3,000 increase. See if we can just, we can dig that out.
Yeah, because that's a pretty significant jump. Are you advertising also to bring students into the district?
There's the advertisement for transportation, the bus route schedule that we need to pay, which is fairly expensive. And then, that went up this year, and I'll look at that in a second. And then, we advertise for job postings, typically for substitutes, you know, any vacancies we have.
Substitutes, we're trying, we've always had an issue with substitutes. We continue to advertising for those. We'll see if we can pinpoint exactly the, the 3,000.
Yeah, that would be, because it seems high. I know it's relatively, not that large an amount, but it just seems like a huge jump in what's, what's going on. I thought you might have been advertising to try to draw your students into coastal connections or wherever.
Not yet.
Okay. I had a similar type of question about employee travel. And Jeff, you had mentioned that there's more professional development programming happening in-house. So, what are we spending the traveling costs on?
I'll go back to the advertising. So, I, we went up, this year to date, we've already spent $6,300, so, in our advertising through today, if you will.
Okay.
So, if there's any other postings that we need to do, will obviously be over, but that's why we went up to the 7,000, because the cost of advertising has increased so much. And we're going to have to do the same advertising as of right now for the bus routes and any job postings.
Okay.
And then for your, just, that question again, in relation to travel.
The travel costs.
Well, you do have a, you know, you have a number of staff members that are traveling between buildings, going, you know, case in point.